There we go.
We're going to call the meeting for Akron City Council to order. Clerk will read the roll.
Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky.
For those who voluntarily wish to do so, will you please stand as we are led in prayer by Pastor Gregory Harrison of Antioch Baptist Church. Immediately following our prayer will be led in the Pledge of Allegiance by Councilman Sims.
Let us pray. Father God, we come to you thanking you for every good and every perfect gift. We thank you for the gift of life, Father. Father, we thank you for the many blessings that you continually bestow upon us. Father, we pray that you would forgive us of our sins. We ask that you would order our steps and our stops, Father. Father, we pray for wise counsel. We pray for wisdom. We pray for understanding. We pray right now, Father, that you would give us a spirit of unity, that we may do the business that you have given us to do, that we may bring and alleviate the suffering of your people. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Clerk, will read the minutes from our previously held meeting?
Minutes from January 14, 2019. Council convened a regular session at 7:00 PM with President Somerville and the Chair. All members were present. Minutes of the previous regular meeting were approved. Reading of petitions and communications, passage of the consent agenda, report of standing and special committees, passage and referral of new ordinances and resolutions, representation from various departments and divisions, public speaking period. No further business on a motion by Fusco. Council adjourned at 8:16 PM to reconvene a regular session on January 28, 2019, or special call.
Any corrections or additions? All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it. Letters, petitions, and communications?
Petition of Property Acquisitions LLC for a conditional use to construct a Chipotle Mexican Grill at the northeast corner of the intersection of George Washington Boulevard and East Waterly Road.
Special attention, Councilman Hope.
Petition of Gino Fasiana for a conditional use to construct a new office building at 544 White Pond.
Special attention, Councilman Neil.
Petition of Joseph Easton for a conditional use to establish a used car lot at 595 Vernon Odom Boulevard.
Special attention, Councilwoman Somerville.
Petition of Joanna House Two for a conditional use to construct an eight-unit supportive housing apartment on the west side of Allen Street, north of East Crozier Street.
Special attention, Councilwoman Samples.
Correspondence from Summit County Board of Elections regarding a 34A petition at 1,006 South Arlington.
File.
Executive Financial Report, fourth quarter.
File.
Income tax receipts through the end of December 2018.
File. You have before you the consent agenda. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky.
Okay. Before we move into our old business, Mayor Horgan?
Thank you. As was previously discussed quite vigorously, I think at your Public Service Committee meeting about the recent snow removal efforts, we, I know we fell woefully short on the delivery of a prime service that the residents deserve and have demanded. And we, as administration, have gone back over the last few days quite vigorously over, you know, the logic and how we can do a better, how we can do a better job. That being said, we may, we're going to be fully committed to this task force that Councilwoman, Council President Somerville has put together, not only on the staffing end, but really to look back through and how we can deliver that service on a better way. You guys brought up a lot of good questions, of which I asked over the weekend and into, until we got the streets cleared. So if we get just a little bit of time to be able to do that, we have dedicated more resources in case, you know, there's going to be, and we live in an area where there's going to be snow, and there's probably going to be some between now and the end of, when that task force is going to make a recommendation. So whatever it may be, I know the current logic and the current plan that we have is flawed, and I cannot deliver that service the way that I think people should expect it. I think we can do a better job, and I know we will do a better job, and we remain committed to be able to do it. It's a core city service. People, people want that, and they want it right away. We want to be able to deliver it in a timely way that still keeps the rest of the city safe, in around hospitals and residentials and primaries and secondaries, all of that. So all of your questions were, I think, very valid, being able to address those points. We take them seriously, and there's nobody who's been harder on, on my administration than me over the last five or six days to be able to deliver that, too. I appreciate you giving me a few minutes, and we will do a better job. So thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Horgan. We'll now move into our old business, and we'll start with rules. Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The item that came before us in rules today was voted on, well, it didn't just come before us, it's been sitting there for a while. And we have, did you want to read it in at all?
I can if you want.
Okay.
Ordinance amending and/or supplementing Title III, Chapter 31 of the Akron Code of Ordinances to enact Article III Neighborhood Advisory Associations, Section 31.43 and 31.47 through Point 31.47, and declaring emergency.
And the report of the committee was adverse, Madam President, so I believe that now we should probably take a vote of council as a whole on the adverse report. And if the clerk would probably be so kind as to do that for us.
Okay. Freeman?
Aye.
Fusco?
Aye.
Hope?
Aye.
Kammer?
Aye.
Keith?
Aye.
Kilby?
Aye.
Milkovich?
Aye.
Neil?
Aye.
Imovian? Okay. Samples? Sims? Somerville?
Aye.
Swersky?
Aye.
The report of the vote is nine yeses, three nays, and one abstention.
Planning, Councilman Fusco?
Time on the agenda?
Time will be granted. Public utilities, Councilwoman Samples?
Time.
Time will be granted. Green Committee, Councilman Swersky?
The legislation was approved, and we urge its passage this evening, vote and its passage this evening.
Are we asking for suspension of the rules?
Asking for suspension of rules, yes.
All right. Any objections on suspension of the rules? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended. Councilman Swersky, do you have any further comment on this piece?
Just to thank the administration for putting together an impressive list of managing partners, stakeholders, reaching out to the, to the population to know that there is a very important resource, our waterways, and to set the stage for further economic development and just recreational use for our citizens.
Okay, thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky.
We'll now move into our new legislation. Planning?
One second. Okay. Item number? Item number one, offered by Fusco. Ordinance, authorizing Director of Planning and Urban Development or his designee to sell city-owned property located at Steiner Avenue and Sawfield Square Properties Incorporated, determining said property is not needed for public use, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda?
Item number two, offered by Fusco. Ordinance, authorizing Director of Public Service or his designee to enter into a contract or contracts with Habitat for Humanity for the construction of sanitary sewer system improvements on or around East Avenue, authorizing payment therefore, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
Report of the committee is favorable, and we ask for suspension of the rules.
Okay. Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Yes, thank you. This is just authorizing the Director of Public Service to enter into a contract with Habitat for Humanity for the construction of a sanitary sewer system. And the legislation, this is going to be funded privately and not publicly. So with that, we recommend approval this evening.
Okay. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky. Number three, first, okay. All right. Item number three, offered by Fusco, Sims, and Imovian. Ordinance, authorizing Director of Neighborhood Assistance or his designee to enter into a contract or contracts with the Board of Education of the Akron Public Schools District for the Community Learning Centers, Akron After School Program, in order to provide learning enrichment activities, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Fusco?
The report of the committee is favorable, and we ask for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Thank you. This is, this continues funding for the Akron After School Program that we have had in this city for like 20, 21 years, something like that. Part of, we want to obviously continue this program, and if they have leftover funds, they, they have a summer program as well. We want to talk to them about their summer program, along with the summer program that we, City Council, have in reference to reading. So, so we will have those conversations. But we also understand that, I don't believe it's our funding, but there is some funding out there that, that they may be short of, and so we're going to probably be looking at that as well. So with that, though, there is a sense of urgency on this, as reported to us from the, this administrator for the program, and so we recommend approval this evening on this. Thank you.
The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky. Item number zero in the Rules Committee, offered by President Somerville. It's a resolution, amending Resolution Number 53.2012, as amended, to revise and supplement Rule 6.11 of the Rules of Procedure for Akron City Council to ensure timely and orderly assignment of legislation for consideration by committees and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee would like this item to be referred, and we will have discussion on it in the later weeks.
Thank you so much. This item will be referred?
Okay. Item number four, offered by Keith. Ordinance, approving and authorizing the execution of lease agreement with Summit County, Ohio, for the use of parking spaces located on the Upper Level B1 of the Hill-K Stubbs Justice Center parking garage. Finding such property is not currently needed for any public use and related findings, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Madam President, the committee would like this item to be placed on the consent agenda.
This item will be placed on the consent agenda.
Item number five, offered by Keith and Fusco. Ordinance, authorizing Director of Public Service or his designee to enter into a contract or contracts after publicly advertising for bids for the replacement or upgrade of existing lighting fixtures at Canal Park Stadium, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee has a favorable report. We are going to request suspension of the rules.
Thank you. Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
It was seven years ago that we started this new contract with Ken Babbie, and the lighting that we have at the facility is 22 years old. We're looking at doing energy-efficient LED lighting, and not only is this the right thing to do, but according to the major league rules, we must do this. And even though we have a minor league, we must adhere to the major league rules. So having said that, that is the reason why we're asking to move forward, so that we are all ready to go for opening day on April the 4th.
The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky. Item number six, offered by Keith. Ordinance, authorizing Director of Public Service to enter into a contract without the formality of advertising for bids with the Ohio Edison Company for the detailed engineering, material procurement, and construction services related to removal and relocation of the Ohio Edison Darrow West Akron Transmission Facilities, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Thank you, Madam President. The committee has a favorable report. We are requesting suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
The reason why we would like to move forward with this, in preparation for the installation of a facility down there, three poles do need to be removed, and doing it now is prudent and also goes along with our timeline.
Thank you. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky. Item number seven, offered by Keith. Ordinance, approving and confirming the appointment of Mayor Daniel Horgan, Councilman Zach Milkovich, and Director, Finance Director Diane Miller-Dawson as trustees to the Akron Summit Solid Waste Management Authority Board, and Jim Hall, Robert Harris, Cindy Donnell, as their representative alternates for the terms ending February 28, 2022, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Keith?
Madam President, we would like this item to be referred. We have asked for some additional information, and I would imagine that next week we'll be able to vote on this.
Thank you. This item will be referred.
Item number eight, offered by Councilman Neil. Resolution urging the City of Akron to implement a temporary utility relief policy for qualifying individuals impacted by the recent shutdown of the federal government, and declaring emergency.
Councilman Samples?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The committee has a favorable report, and we ask for suspension of the rules.
Any objections? Seeing and hearing none, the rules have been suspended.
Nothing to add unless Mr. Neil wants to add something to his legislation? No?
Okay. The rules have been suspended. The committee's report is favorable. All in favor signify by saying aye. Any opposed? And we have one no.
Roll call and final passage. Freeman, Fusco, Hope, Kammer, Keith, Kilby, Milkovich, Neil, Imovian, Samples, Sims, Somerville, Swersky.
We will now go to the portion of our meeting that we refer to as our public comment period. If you wish to speak to council during this time, you may approach the podium. We're going to ask that you please sign in, state your full name, spell your last name, and give us your address. You will have three minutes to speak to this body. Speakers are reminded that this is an official meeting. Remarks should be kept respectful and remain the council business. Speakers should refrain from making any personal attacks. Anyone who breaches decorum will be ruled out of order and may be removed from council chambers. Is there anyone here that would like to speak during our public comment period?
Council Presidents and members of the council, my name is John Beatty, B-E-A-T-Y, at 2047 Wyndham Road. I just wanted to quote a portion of scripture to begin my thoughts. Matthew 8, verse 20. "The Son of Man has no place to lay his head." Our Savior, for those who are Christians, the Son of God, was homeless. And I, I fear for those folks in these next few days, when we're expecting a highs below zero. And it seems to me that we should be helping folks like Sage Lewis and all of those of us who support him in his effort to help the city house the homeless, to not come by and order those homeless who have found a house that I think the city has approved as a group home, but they can't live in it, I think, from 7:00 PM to 6:00 AM in the morning. It seems absolutely, I don't know, just merciless, to do that to homeless people who are trying to solve their homeless problem themselves by fixing an abandoned house to order them not to live there, not to stay there overnight, as we approach these highs below zero. That is still my major concern. The other concern is, I wanted to share a few words about the snow and ice and chuckles. We were confined to our house at our home, basically from Saturday night to, I think, Wednesday or Thursday. It got so bad after we went out on a mercy visit to a family to bring them supper. And traveling our road, Wyndham Road, and then on North Hill on Aberdeen, found out that the car was undrivable because something had been ripped off the bottom. It seems to me, waiting until people complain, to send out a snowplow, is a no-brainer. It's the most inefficient plan or non-plan I've ever heard of. The other rule, about five inches of snow before you plow for residential streets, absolutely no-brainer. I hope those who are on this study committee will take those comments into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Reverend Beatty.
Pastor Greg Harrison, 670 Vernon Odom Boulevard. Thank you, Ms. President, and members of council. The amount of snow that fell last week, and the crippling effect that it had on the city was alarming. The failure to clear the roads left the entire city unable to move, and it blocked access to vital lifesaving quality of life items. The streets not being plowed left people stranded, unable to work, unable to go to school, unable to go to the doctors. Medications was missed, and families were cut off from each other. But thankfully, the response from the city was immediate. An apology was sent out, and an emergency action plan was implemented. Outside contractors were brought in, and in a matter of days, things were better. As a result of last week, policies were reviewed. A task force is now being formed, and a pledge was made to us, the citizens, that this would never happen again, because the city would be prepared for oncoming storms. the city would be prepared for oncoming storms. This emergency management plan was put into place because of what happened last week, adversely affected the whole city. However, this only happened because it affected the whole city. We live in a city where a certain class of people living within certain geographical locations, when they are negatively affected, immediate action is taken. However, this is not done for everyone and the same emergency actions are not afforded to every citizen in Akron. I'm specifically talking about poor people and people of color. And anytime racial disparities are mentioned, leaders in decision-making positions get offended, some in this room. Oftentimes smirks are made between council members and things are said or not said. People turn away in their chairs, but this really doesn't change the reality. The streets are not plowed in my neighborhoods. The snow is removed, but there are still conditions that leave us stranded, unable to go to work, but that's because there are no jobs. We're not safe in our neighborhoods because the city has not invested in certain neighborhoods. Our schools may be new, but they are substandard because resources are not allocated equitably. Access to transportation is inadequate because CBG funding and Tiger grants have been used to build areas of downtown, uptown, and improve the aesthetics of existing structures. This is difficult, but representatives that we elect, that we send to this council as our collective community voice are malign, marginalized, they're plotted against, and if they have the audacity to speak to power, they're politically castrated and lynched. Previously, when I would see MAGA, Make America Great Again, I would cringe because it spoke to my soul. What it really said to me was, let's get back to the good old days. Now, when I see it, I really have to think that it means make Akron great again. And those good old days were not good for everyone. Dr. King says that we will not remember the words of our enemies, but we will remember the silence of our friends. I'm asking the power structure, my white brothers and sisters, to speak to what is not being spoke to. The snow is being removed from our streets, but we still can't get out. We're still blocked in. And I'm asking that you would hear me. If you do a case study of every city that has experienced civil unrest, the conditions that I speak of were existing before the civil unrest. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Harrison. Is there anyone else here in the audience that would like to speak during our public comment period? Seeing none? Oh, we have another one?
Didn't expect to be doing this. Hi, Scott H. Foster, one-two-eight Harcourt Drive. Yeah, so Marilyn Keith is one of our representatives locally, so I guess I'm from West Akron, which seemed to be, when I watched all this take place, kind of like the epicenter of what was going on in Akron between the West Akron, West Hill, North Hill, sand run areas. And my kids, I've got four, I have what I call the middles. They're ten and twelve. And I have an F-150. And when I would get home from work each day, they would meet me at the door and they'd say, Dad, let's go, let's go on patrol. And we'd hop in the truck and we'd just drive up and down the streets and we would pull cars out. And we did twenty-five cars in three days. And that was just within a four-block radius from my house. So I'm forty-four. We've been through this before. We've been through this our whole lives. We're Akronites. This is what we do, right? What I saw in the streets was incredible and disheartening. Incredible because the city actually rallied around itself and to what the Reverend said earlier, we kind of rallied together and we realized that we're all citizens and we really did our best to help each other out. At the same time, there was an incredible sense of disheartenment, if that's a word, and a lack of priority by our own city. And it was, for lack of a better word, soul-crushing. There were homeless people that I saw helping dig cars out. It was just, there were incredible things that were taking place in Akron. So I do want to commend the city for their response and pushing the panic button when they did because I don't know how much longer we could have gone out there. There were, there were people that were, we had three ambulances stuck on the same street together because they were trying to get the patients out of there. It was, it was, it was pretty interesting. I called it a war zone without bullets, a winter war zone, which is probably over-dramatic, but not when you're out there and you're trying to free up two eighty- or ninety-year-old people that are in a car and you know that they're in peril. So we, we, we trust that you're going to put forth your best effort and we know that this most likely won't happen again. I spent a good several days defending Marilyn on the next-door neighbor message boards because the city was just in outrage. And I'll continue to do that because honestly, I love Akron and we believe in you guys and we know you can do better and we know that you will. So thanks much.
Thank you so much, Mr. Foster. Anyone else wishing to speak during public comment period? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close our public comment period and move into our committee assignments, rules. Councilman Keith. Budget and finance, Councilman Freeman. Planning, Councilman Fusco. Public service, Councilman Keith. Public utilities, Councilman Samples. Public safety, Councilman Kammer. Parks and Rec, Councilman Neil. Housing, Councilman Kilby. Health and social services, Councilman Amobian. Economic development, Councilman Sims. Green committee, Councilman Swirsky. Is there anything else coming before council? Councilman Sims?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to say I appreciate Pastor Harrison's presentation this, this evening. You know, we're in the midst of just getting over celebrating the great Reverend Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. And so as the pastor talks about being locked in, you know, I, I think sometimes I, I experience what I feel, the same struggles here in chambers, trying to articulate, not as an accusation, but speaking truth to power about issues as it relates to racial inequities in our city. Not that anyone here caused it, but I think that we have opportunities to really try to address it. Actually, I just happen to have the report here with me preparing for a meeting tomorrow called The Two Tomorrows. And it really highlights some of the work recently done with the trio on Elevate Akron. And it's the, the, the piece that really struck me was on systemic racial exclusion is still real. And I believe that the city used this as a part, well, I shouldn't say just the city, but the county and the chambers use it as a part of their evidence base in creating the Elevate Akron Report. And it says this, "Disparities in economic outcome, employment and income are equally stark. Strategies calling for racial inclusion in our region and across the nations demonstrate the shared belief that closing these gaps matter. Still, the gaps aren't closing. Why? Individual interventions aren't enough to combat centuries of systemic racial exclusion." It goes on to say, "Previous actions to promote economic racial inclusion in northeast Ohio has included targeted support to minority entrepreneurs and minority-owned business mentorship programs designed to improve social networks and career prospects on minorities and workforce, increased access to higher education for minority students, and sector-based inclusion and diversity strategies." Finally, "The strategies like these will remain important, are remain important, but their success has been undermined by longstanding and current institutional practices determining land use, transportation, infrastructure development, education support, and business development. These practices drive and reinforce systemic racial exclusion and results in economic inequalities. Combating systemic racial exclusion requires more. It requires changing minds, policy, practices, and laws. We can drive more equitable outcomes through increased awareness, actions, and accountability." And I think to the point the pastor was making today, I mean, we can, we can push back. It is very uncomfortable to talk about at times. It's even more uncomfortable to, to live it all the time. And so my hope is that we begin as a council to listen and try our best to see what some of your other colleagues are saying and try to see it from the lens not of just what we're saying, but looking at the report and what the reports are saying so that we can work better to make sure we don't have these groups that are excluded from economic development. That's all we're asking. And so, you know, I know we're all going to continue to celebrate Martin Luther King and Black History Month will be coming up soon and we'll do our part at that too, but all we're asking here is that we look at all of Akron and be mindful of the folks who are really hurting as a result of a history of systemic racial inequalities in our city. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Neil?
Thank you, Madam President. I had a list of things in regards to some legislation, but I'll speak on the topic that's handed out, I'll run through those. You know, I heard my colleagues say that we're coming upon Black History Month. I think we will really progress. Yes, it is history of those of African descent here on this continent, but we'll really come to understand and move forward when we understand this is a part of American history. A part of American history that we're coming upon four hundred years. This is the four-hundredth year of commemoration of since chattel slavery here on this continent. And the impact of that, we are still dealing with. As she stated, none of us were here, but we are still dealing with those inequities. How many of you know there was a time, I think it was nineteen eighty-something, that they took it off the books here in Akron, that if you were of Negro blood, you couldn't own a home here in Akron? When we talk about understanding systemic problems, you've heard me mention, we, we celebrated the Race Equity and Leadership National Day of Racial Healing. That's so that we as legislators understand that when we pass policy, if we don't, if we aren't sensitive to understand the impact that that policy can adversely impact some of our constituents. So I look forward as we go into a month where we look very closely at a very cornerstone piece of this nation's history, that we look at it not just as, you know, a certain segment, but all of our history and work to correct the inequities that come from it. Now, we've been talking about some things here and we've talked about establishing, we can't really address this until we establish a racial equity policy. I know the school board has worked on one, a lot of our corporations are. So when we move into that, understanding that we are working together to create a policy that brings about equity, not just for, for people of color. I often speak of the tow truck incident where it's an inequable policy that's impacting folks. We had a, a woman, European descent, that came down and said, hey, look, I'm locked out of this. We need to be equitable in everything that we do. Now, there's a couple of things that are coming up right here in council that we've talked about. One, very simple, but since I've been here on council, I've spoken about how the city funds concerts in all the wards except for three, four, and five. And now that we have, when I looked at this, I realized I left out Mr. Swirsky's ward, but they didn't wait for anything. They're, they're pretty self-sufficient. But still, we, we need to look at that. Now, we may not have more money to have more concerts. That's why I ask for those members of council to please look at, in your ward, what concerts can you do without so that instead of seven out of our ten wards having seven events and the others having to schedule something special, we schedule events for those wards. That's just one way that we can start to work towards addressing those issues. There's others that have come and spoken across the, during the open comment period, and we know what they are. Some of them are very difficult, we don't want to deal with, but we've got to deal with the health issue. I remember when we were going through some of the discussion even about the equitable, how equitable was the shift in the primary. One of the things that we looked at is, it made me look at our democratic charter. This is all Democratic council, we talked about that. In our charter, it talks about protecting those who have worked for a retirement, making sure that they can live through that retirement. This in, if you look at the Ohio Democratic Constitution. I say that because this, on a national level, the one organization that we pay a lot of money to be a part of, National League of Cities, when they looked at around what was impacting every city, one of the core things that was impacting them was this issue, back then it was Michael Brown, all these killings that were taking place. And so you had every constituency group, the LGBTQ community, the Apollo, the Asian group, Hispanic group, Native Americans, all came together and looked at how, how do we become a more equitable, equitable society? And the one thing they said that we got to deal with first is the one thing that this nation has really never dealt with, and that was race. So I want to join my colleagues, I thank Pastor Harrison for speaking. Not to put pressure on anyone, but if, if, if a woman comes down here and she feels that she's not being represented, I, I think I've spoken on that. If someone from the gay community comes up and speak, I think I've spoken on that. Any other part of our community, it, we need to be able to reach across the aisle and work together on this issue and speak freely without feeling that we're responsible for the past, but we are responsible for, for what takes place right now. I'll leave that there. Madam President, I did want to speak on two other things. One, that piece of legislation that came in, I raised my hand to be able to speak in regards to legislation and timeliness. I ask that when we speak on that, that we also address the response that we get from the law department. Because what we have to understand, we're two different branches of government. If someone from the legislative body asks for a piece of legislation, it shouldn't be checked by whether the administration is doing something. This is a different body. I hope that we're thinking with two minds and our, and our work parallels. But if a member from this body asks for a piece of legislation, it should not be held up. And that may be, especially if you, if it was in relation to a piece that came in today, the request for that legislation was in time. Okay? That's one. Second, last week I asked that, I know that things are going to be rolling pretty fast. We know that we're in election season, but we still have to do our job. I asked that yourself, Mr. Fusco, and Mr. Milkovich get together and plan, and I think we need two days where councilmen get together and we need a strategic plan to be able to address just the issues that come before us. And again, I'm going to speak of the one that Mr. Nomah's brought about the retirees. I know that they're in a labor negotiation, the one about the Elevate Akron Plan, we need to deal with that and just our general business, please. And then lastly, well, not lastly, I've got one more after this. I think we, we've talked, we've missed some opportunities here on council and, and I think in part due to some of the, we allow politics to get involved in us developing policy. We've talked about a lot of issues. All of them stand on where are we going to get the money from? We need to be able to determine budget-wise how we're going to pay for some of these things that we're talking about. So I noted during the discussion about having our budget online, we had talked about, it was stated that we have some of these tools already to be able to do strategic planning. I'm asking that in between the capital budget, which we, we want to approve on the eleventh, and before we go into the operating budget. we go into the operating budget, that we use the tools that we have as they are. Because one, and this happens all the time out of control, but it's definitely going to happen this year, snowplow is going to blow our, our budget through the roof. And I think one of the reasons why we wait and we, when we have five inches is to conserve money. Correct me if I'm wrong. The reason why we don't put down salt sometimes is again, to conserve money. If it's, if it's, if it's a certain temperature is one reason, but the other things. So, I'm asking if we can have a budget thing to, to look at those as well as we looked at the park recreation piece last year, last week, two weeks ago? That dealt with the splash parks and things, but we didn't really identify the money for improving the basketball courts, like at, at the different places. And I know it's in the budget, but it's not in the budget. So, if we can look at those things, please. And then last but not least, for those who are interested in some of the things that are going in, in Ward Four, there are members of the community that are coming together to have an event on Friday, this Friday, I think that's February 1st, at 6 o'clock at Bulto High School. Would like to have your attendance.
Thank you. Councilman Samples?
Thank you. Just a few things. It's an old in Akron. We're, we should be used to this. Both of us were born and raised here. And although we may have missed the mark in the beginning, we came together in the end. And I think that's what's important. We had our own individual ways of addressing our constituents and addressing their issues. And I think we will do better. And I think this task force that the council president has put together will do us some, some good. We talk a lot about inclusion around here. And inclusion is inclusion. It should not be based on race, class, ethnicity, or social and economic background. But the one thing that concerns me the most about a city is when I pick up a paper, well, let me back up. When I get a call from the newspaper and they ask me about the homeless and, you know, those around this horseshoe, you know, that's a very sensitive area for me. I just, it troubles me when I see so many people in our city that are homeless. And they had a report on CNN this morning of them finding 15 bodies on the street frozen in Chicago because of the temperatures dropping so low. Our temperatures here in Akron are about to drop just as low this week, and that concerns me. But what concerns me most is we here, the legislative body, we passed legislation for a group home to help those homeless individuals, just to find out from the newspaper that this very home was condemned. How do we pass legislation on a home that was condemned? And how did we not know that ahead of time? So, we've got to do better. We can't have people sleeping on the streets. It's about to be 24 below zero this week. And we do not need to be having to send out more letters apologizing because now we have frozen bodies of homeless people on the street. I, I think we need to figure out, how did this house get condemned and we not know about it, but yet we passed legislation for it? And how do we fix that? Because they have to be inside. It's going to be too cold. A tent is not going to cut it right now. Where are our warming stations? It's great that we're going to have warming stations in the CLCs, but they're not all night. No one's open all night. So, now I want to challenge our churches. We have to do better as a city, as a community. It's going to be cold. And the homeless aren't going away. They're here. And it's our duty, our jobs, to help them. And this is the time where we help them. We don't need to wait for another episode and then say we're sorry. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anything else coming before Councilman, Councilman Freeman?
Yeah, I do want to address one of the things that Mr. Neal said about inequality when it comes to the towing business. There is no inequality when it comes to the towing business. Mr. Kammer, you sit on the tow review board, do you not? Or you did it one time? Yes, I've been on that board. Some people came in and said, hey, the city has certain companies that, you know, take over certain sections of the city. We'd like in on that business. Well, there's no openings right now. And so, they say, well, just divide up the city differently then. It's a very, it's very strategically laid out where those people are with their impound lots, where those people are in reference to entry points onto expressways, exit points off of expressways. So, to say, oh, there's inequality with, with towing business, if one of those companies, and this happened, this happened here in the past few years, one of those companies would ever decide they no longer want to do business with the city of Akron, those ladies can come forth, they can put their name in the hopper, just like anyone else. But there is not inequality. This is a very, very finely tuned system that we have when it comes to towing. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Neal?
Madam Chair, and, and with all due respect to my colleague, I think it would be good for us to go through an equity training seminar so that we understand the difference between inequality and equity. And matter of fact, this, our chair promised to bring forth a new policy. Because I believe Councilwoman Samples had brought in a policy and it was stated that, well, it was flawed and that the chair would bring in another one. One was never brought in. The, the fact is this, we have people asking to participate, not just black folks, but here was a white woman that came down and said, I just wanted an opportunity to, to participate in the economic opportunity in this city. We've got $3.5 billion flowing through this city. When you look at the ODOT contract, the CSO contract, and our regular budget, as much as possible, we should make sure that those who are able to participate in that economic opportunity reflect the citizenship of this city. Black, white, male, female, Asian, whatever it is, that's not happening. People are coming down and telling us that that's not happening. So, again, what I'm saying is, I think it would be good for us as a council to go through some equity training. Now, we went through some sensitivity training. This is a little bit, it's the same thing, but it moves it from just talk to where our policy and our procedures actually reflect equity, equitable opportunity for our citizens. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Fusco?
Mr. President, Somerville, I, the findings of the Elevate Akron Plan overdue without question. I stand before you and I realize that I've had certain privileges that many, many have not had. And I certainly appreciate that. I don't appreciate it. I realize it. And I think we, as a society, need to understand that first. That's one of the first steps that we need to have. And, and it's taken me a while, but I've gotten there. I realize that I've, I've had privilege. What we need to do, and I agree, and I think many of us around here do agree, we need to look at the equitable issue. We need to look at more inclusion. We need to make sure that we reach out. And, and everybody has an opportunity to bid on projects, a fair opportunity. We need to look at and evaluate every step of the way. And, and I agree with that. We did, as you had mentioned, Dr. Lyons came in and we had a lot of good discussion as a result of that. I know I learned a lot and grew from that experience. And I know I have further to go. But I sincerely believe that, that, that we do need to continue that discussion in terms of how we can do better. And I agree with you on that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Mobian?
Thank you, Madam President. I appreciate the commentary. Regarding the last issue, there's absolutely no question that we have excluded folks from these tolling districts. And I, I don't think that anybody intentionally did this. I really think over time, you tried to lay out a plan that made sense at the time, kept down confusion. But in the process, we excluded folks, particularly by the mere fact that a person who chose to get out of the business could sell his or her business. And it included the tolling district, when they really had no authority to include the district. To, to sell your materials is fine. And if your staff wanted to go to that tolling district, fine. But those individuals had no authority to sell the district with that. And it appears from what I have seen and read, that we've allowed this practice to continue. And that is the main problem that we have. If I'm not wrong, I think we have seven tolling districts, five providers, with two providing services to two districts each. And they just so happen to be, if I'm mistaken, please correct me, all white men. And when you talk about a female who came down to ask to be a part of the service, as a service provider, and she had her own equipment, she's been doing this, and she's a white female, it didn't, it didn't really matter to me. But when I started looking into this, the explanations that were given talked about keeping the confusion down. I mean, it wasn't very difficult for me to understand that you have some borders around certain areas. And I think there's seven. You know, if I'm wrong about the number, get, correct me, please. And I can understand how people will get a little confused at the border in terms of, of these different areas of where you, where you'll start and where you'll stop. But I, I will guarantee you, if when they submitted an invoice, that if they didn't get paid the next time, they wouldn't make that same mistake again. Because you can clearly define the addresses along the border where your property, where your line would start and the other persons would stop. But out of those seven tolling districts, we have no African-Americans, no females. And you're telling me that it's because of all the confusion over the years, that we haven't done a better job in opening this business up? I mean, there are ways to do this. There may have been confusion in the past, but I think we can all sit down and, and look at, how do you make that distinction, especially when it comes to those borders, when people were talking about all the confusion? You know, I don't think you'll get confused too often if you told in an area that you were restricted from and you didn't get paid. I don't think you would make that mistake too many times. So, I think there are ways that we can look at this. I never paid a whole lot of attention to it because I quite frankly, didn't quite understand what they were talking about. But as I looked at the materials, and I did get a lot of material about these tolling districts, they belong to us. We hire the companies to service those areas. And it obviously generating revenue for the individuals that participate because they keep renewing their contracts. And I understand we have a body created where you hear, you know, conflicts, and I guess you had some problems over the years. But I think it's time for us to look at that again. We had a young lady who came down. She has all the equipment that she needs. And she's ready to participate in those tolling districts. And I'm not really sure why we have to allow two companies, one each, to have two different districts. That doesn't make any sense to me. And, and I'm not blaming anybody. I think you do something year after year after year. You don't think about the practice. But then when you began to explore, why, how did we get here and why are we here today? And we can do better. We can open up that business to other people and let people understand, this district does not belong to you. The equipment is yours. If your staff that you have, when you decide to get out of the business, you can ask them if they want to go to this other tolling district service, but not the district itself. And I think that's what's been happening. People retire, get out of the business, and they give the district to someone else, and they don't have the authority to do that. And we've allowed that to happen. And that's something we need to look at. With regard to the comments that were made by Reverend Harrison, and thank you so much, Reverend Harrison, for coming down. I was just looking at the report of DDD. And there's some very core values in here that this report speaks, speaks to. And it talks about trust, respect, collaboration, innovation, inclusion, excellence, the kinds of things you look for when you're trying to collaborate with someone else and to do a better job at what we do. And we know that all of our communities haven't gotten the kinds of services that they deserve. And I think we try to do better all the time. But one of the things we probably don't do enough of is collaborating with the people that live in those communities and making sure we include them and hear their voices. Whether it's a subcommittee of the overall committees that we create, we need to hear the voices of the people that live in those communities who are saying, we are left out. And we know that there are parts of our cities where people are actually left out. I drive around this city. You know, I live in Ward Eight. You know, the services are usually extremely good in Ward Eight. But for a couple of days, my street wasn't plowed either. But I didn't worry because I could get somebody to come and do mine, my driveway and everything else. There's still some parts of the city, and I get, still, I'm still getting calls. And I think we're trying, but I think if we allow people in the wards and work with the, the leadership that the people have elected, we'll do a much better job of getting things done. We're so busy down here excluding folks from participating and listening to different ones, that we are not entertaining all voices and attaching resources with those voices. And we can be a big help, a big help to this city in making sure that all folks are properly serviced and are getting what they need from this city. You know, I came here some 40 some years ago. I like Akron. I'm not moving and I'm not leaving. I'm going to do what I can to make it a better place to live each and every day. So, I'm willing to do whatever I can, roll up my sleeves. People call me and I give them numbers and things to call. I'm willing to work with any and everybody to ensure that the people's voices are heard and that the resources they need are there for them. And I thank you very much, Madam President.
Councilman Kammer?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to kind of explain to some of my colleagues being on the tow review board, what some of my job duties are. I listen to complaints. My job is to mediate any complaints that come in from citizens that might have complaints in regards to the tow companies. I also, by me sitting on the tow review, review board, apologize, I listen to the Akron Police Department in regards to the response that we get from the tow companies, the cleanup after an accident, and how fast we can clear the roadways so we can keep traffic going. The tow review, review board has nothing to do with redrawing the districts. This body here has that power. And if I'm not mistaken, we had two colleagues of mine here bringing legislation that obviously gave the opportunity to a white male tow company owner and a white female tow company owner. And the legislation didn't work. It was no good. Akron Police Department came over here and testified that it was not going to work. It was not in the best, best interest of the city or the citizens. So, with that, we have gave the one individual an opportunity. This council did not approve that.
Thank you. Before we do adjourn, I do want to just thank those who have come down to council just to share their concerns, frustrations about the snow. I want to thank all of those who contacted each and every one around the horseshoe by phone calls and emails. Earlier today, we did make the announcement that Akron City Council will create a snow and ice task force. So, we want you to know that we have heard you. We are going to be looking into this issue. We're reviewing how we respond in snow events, just to make sure that we do better. I do want to publicly thank Mayor Horgan just for his commitment to supporting this task force and the work that this group will do, just to make sure that the city of Akron does better for the residents of Akron. We do have a motion for adjournment. Is there a second? No objections. We're adjourned.
This concludes the live broadcast of Akron City Council. Margot Somerville, President of Council, presiding.